Well, Alfred, so how does this go? Are we guests of the meeting or co-chairing the meeting?
No, this is a joint meeting, so I'll call, roll call in a couple of minutes if that's okay.
And then what happens?
And then I'll do-
Is Mayor Jones chairing the meeting? Is Mayor Jones chairing the meeting?
We can have Mayor Wallace Jones chair the meeting or between her or Mayor Taylor.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID followed by pound.
Jesus Christ.
Hi there, good evening. Can you hear me?
You have not entered any members. Please re-enter your meeting ID. You entered nine, four, seven.
Mayor Wallace Jones, would you like to start with a roll call?
Yeah, so can you hear that? Let's call the meeting to order and let's begin by taking roles. So good to see so many familiar faces.
I'll start with the Menlo Park City Council, if that's okay?
That sounds good, yeah.
Councilmember Mueller? Councilmember Carlton? Councilmember Nash?
Present.
Vice Mayor Combs? Sorry, Vice Mayor Combs?
He's trying to get into the meeting now.
Okay. Mayor Taylor?
Here.
And then that's Menlo Park City Council, East Palo Alto City Council, Councilmember Abrika?
Here.
Councilmember Gochet? Councilmember Moody?
Here.
Vice Mayor Romelo? And Mayor Wallace Jones?
Here.
Great, and just to confirm, Vice Mayor Combs, are you in?
And Walfred, I also see some council members from Palo Alto, so I want to make sure we don't forget them.
Okay, City of Palo Alto.
Vice Mayor Combs is here and also Councilmember Mueller is trying to log in.
And Walfred, this is Ed Chikata from Palo Alto. If it's helpful, I could identify the Palo Alto council members?
Okay.
Also, since this wasn't noticed as a Palo Alto council meeting, we have a fourth member, just for your information, who is in the attendees, that's Councilmember Eric Filset. And so if you're able to bring him in, hopefully that's not a problem. Just to note, the other council members that are here from Palo Alto are Allison Cormack, Greg Tanaka, and Lydia Koo.
Hi.
Thank you. I think, I think that's it. So we'd like to start the meeting, if I can present a video regarding fireworks that was presented on K-Ron Channel 4.
... lately. It almost feels like it's increasing every night.
Now at nine, loud bangs and bright lights, you'd almost think it was the Fourth of July. People around the Bay Area say they're fed up with the sounds of fireworks going off just about every night. Good evening, I'm Ken Wayne.
And I'm Pail Moore. From San Francisco to San Jose, people say they can hear the loud booms carry on for hours into the early morning.
Officials say they're receiving more complaints than usual. Kronfor's Taylor Bisacchi joins us now live from Alameda and has more on this. Taylor?
Yeah, Ken, ironically, I actually just heard a lot of those loud booms. And while we typically see and hear more fireworks during the week of July 4th, neighbors say they've been continually seeing them over the last several weeks. And while it may be all fun and games, some others say that there are real health and safety concerns on top of the fireworks already being illegal. This is a new nightly scene across many Bay Area cities. In Alameda County, the use of illegal fireworks started several weeks ago and has gradually gotten worse as we approach July 4th.
Every night. It's not just weekends. It is every night.
It's just loud booming constantly. And I know there's been other neighbors who have found kegs, like giant firework kegs, in the middle of the street.
Martin Wilson lives in Alameda with his dog Callie.
Every time she hears one of the big booms, she tries to run for cover or run underneath the bed.
The loud booms also travel to the East Oakland Hills, where Kathleen Kirkish says fireworks concern many of her neighbors in the Sequoia Heights neighborhood.
We are just below Skyline Boulevard, and that's another area where people congregate, set off fireworks. Our concerns are around noise and nuisance, but more specifically around fire danger. Because we are in the hills, it's a heavily wooded area.
She says many residents have called in about the illegal fireworks, but they're not the only ones. Many can no longer get through to the fireworks tip line for the Oakland Police and Fire Department. Meanwhile, the Alameda County Sheriff's Office says they're also receiving more complaints than usual.
From June 1st to today, and we've taken almost 400 fireworks complaint calls in the unincorporated communities of Alameda County. So Castro Valley, parts of San Leandro, Hayward, and out toward Pleasanton and Livermore.
While the Sheriff's Office says now's the time they tipage seizures of illegal fireworks, they say this year has been challenging.
Law enforcement's attention this year was not focused on fireworks and prevention as we were dealing with a lot of the issues going on in our communities around law enforcement. So we believe that that was a good opportunity for people who like to bring in fireworks into the state.
Well, not only are these fireworks illegal, but the Sheriff's Office says that they can be deadly if they're used improperly. It's also important to note and be mindful of your neighbors as these fireworks can negatively affect veterans, animals, livestock, and more. For now, we're live in Alameda. Taylor Bisacchi, Kronfor News.
So Walfred, I just, I appreciate that video. And I also want to make sure that we are aligned on our intentions for tonight. So certainly from the city of East Palo Alto, we have asked our police force via our, via our police chief to help us understand what our posture is going into the Fourth of July and also to help us understand how we will be managing from a law enforcement perspective, what has cropped up pre-Fourth of July and what most assuredly will continue post-Fourth of July without some active management plan. So we certainly hope to hear that from our chief. We hope to hear from our sister cities as well, and hopefully their law enforcement leaders are here to help us see that picture. But in addition to that, I think as councils, the question that we're all asking is, what more can and should we be doing to help make sure that we're all leaned in to helping us to abate what is clearly a concern for all of our residents in a way that is practical, realistic, and that we can all sort of live with at a time when we are already triggered by many other things. So that would certainly be my intention for tonight. I am so grateful to see so many council members from, from Menlo Park and also from Palo Alto. And Palo Alto in particular, I'm calling out that I know you all are on recess. So it would take a lot for me to join a meeting on recess, and I'm glad that so many of you have prioritized this for tonight. I do want to open the gate for both the mayor of Menlo Park and also the mayor of Palo Alto if, 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 if he's on to help us see if there are other intentions that we need to jointly articulate before we move through the next hour and a half together. But I'd like to start with my sister mayor from Menlo Park, Mayor Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Wallace Jones, for having us here. And myself experiencing all of the fireworks for the past several weeks, and it will increase as we get closer to the holiday. I am definitely, myself personally, am in line with you. We have over 200-plus calls in the city of Menlo Park, and it has been a hard-to-sleep at night and also looking at the dialogue on Nextdoor. And there is a petition circulating, I believe, in all three cities, but I know for sure in Menlo Park and in East Palo Alto. So I'm not sure if any of the petitioners has reached out to anyone. They were looking specifically for a fine for folks who are, who are setting the fireworks off. I'm not sure if that is the best, the best line of defense, considering law enforcement would still have to, my assumption is catch the person in the act to be able to give them a ticket. And right now, if you call the police, usually the person is gone. All you see is literally a smoke or debris from the fireworks, both the fireworks and the firecrackers, because I look at them a little differently. But that's my perspective, and I do not see Mayor Fine on the call. Is Mayor Fine on the call?
That's correct. Mayor Fine could not make it. Mayor, so I believe Councilmember Lydia Koo might speak on behalf of the Palo Alto Council.
So thank you so much to Mayor Regina Wallace Jones for inviting us and for putting on this council meeting. It means a lot. As neighbors, you know, we're being affected by the similar issues to all our residents, and it's, it's pretty scary for a lot of people and also for the animals, right? I mean, I think on the newscast it said. So I'm completely in line with us together moving forward and coming up with a solution. You know, we realize that we do have staff reductions and budget reductions. However, we do need to address what's coming forward to us this coming holiday. And so I look forward to our, our collaboration here to come up with a solution in, in, in addressing this matter. Thank you so much again. Hello to everybody.
Hello, good to see you again. All right, so I think, and by the way, I want to pause because there are many council members here. Is there another council member from any of our neighboring cities or from our home city of East Palo Alto who needs to weigh in with a different idea about what we need to cover tonight?
Hi, this is Councilmember Larry Moody. Hello, everyone. So can you give us a snapshot of what the agenda, what agenda you have planned tonight in terms of topics? Because I'm very interested to know who, you know, from law enforcement is going to be speaking? If there's a representative from the Fire Department that will be speaking with us? And then also, are there any measurable outcomes that you desire, that you for, that you hope that we can come to tonight that would allow the three cities to come together, maybe make a joint statement about going forward, working together? Or is that something that we cannot embark upon? And this is more of a discussion of flushing out the things that have been impacting all three cities and some of the community responses versus? I'm just trying to get a sense of what are, what are our desired outcomes, our measurable outcomes from this?
That's a good question. So from my perspective, I know for sure, and I can only vouch for one city, and that's the city of East Palo Alto. I know that Chief Pardini, because we've talked about it at length, both with our words and with our text messages. I know that Chief Pardini is prepared to talk about the parts that are publishable and able to be made public today, what our plans are from a law enforcement perspective going into the Fourth of July. What I don't know, but what I am hoping is true, is that our neighboring cities have similar plans that they can share. Ultimately, however, and, you know, every police force is different. I know ours is a police force of 38 people, so it is not a huge number. And at any given time, we have it single, single digits of police officers on the streets. So what I know for sure is that we cannot tackle this challenge purely from a law enforcement perspective. And so after we finish hearing from our law enforcement leaders for our cities, I think that we should engage in some dialogue as sister councils about what additional things we can think about. For example, we know that San Jose has deployed an app to help their citizens more actively report on issues with photographs, et cetera, to help triangulate on where problems are. There are some counties, like the county of San Mateo that has, not San Mateo, Alameda, that has deployed CERT to help with neighborhood block management and to help sort of spread the word across our neighbors, block by block, about the dangers of setting off some of these fireworks and also what our wishes are as neighbors to be respectful to each other at this time. So there are many different strategies that we can talk about, and I always say, no one is as smart as all of us are together. So what I'm hoping is that after we hear from law enforcement, we can engage in some dialogue and see if there are some joint ideas that we can commit to together as sister cities to help make the Fourth of July weekend and the weeks that are after that a little bit more joyful for all of us. And if it includes a statement, a statement is fine. I think that definitely gets us all on the same page publicly. But what I'm more looking for is the actions that we can take to help back the statements and to help ensure and assure our residents that we have at least a reasonable plan that's going to move us through this. So that's my aspiration.
Yeah, and just fine, do we, do we have a representative from Menlo Fire or Palo Alto Fire Department here?
So Walfred will have to tell me exactly who is exactly here, but I did understand about two hours before this meeting that we did have someone who was joining from the Fire Board.
Oh.
I'm the Fire Chief in Palo Alto.
There we go. There's-
Great.
Chief Chapel Omens on the line.
Super, good for you too. Awesome.
Thank you.
All right, so maybe we can begin with, with legal enforcement and perhaps start with Chief Pardini. And if the other chiefs are prepared, maybe we'll follow, follow behind Chief Pardini with our plans. We'll all hear some good ideas there, and then we can sort of open it up for discussion and idea generation that extends this thinking after we hear from our chiefs.
All right, can everyone hear me?
We can hear you, Chief Pardini.
Fairly good, thank you so much. Just to give you a snapshot of what I'll be talking about tonight and what you'll see in the next week is we have got a lot of confidential investigations going on right now, like the mayor talked about. So I alerted her and the city manager that I would be talking about certain parts of our efforts and not the others. But my plan is that after this weekend, on Monday, to make a report about what we've been doing with the confidential investigations and the outcomes of those, and forward that through the office of my city manager so it can go out to the public, and they'll know what efforts we've made and what kind of successes we've had. With respect to the resources, you know, I've been in communication with Chief Bertini and Chief Johnson. We've been working with the District Attorney's Office, the Sheriff's Office, State Parole, Fire Department, and basically San Mateo County law enforcement agencies. We've got another meeting coming up on Wednesday that we're going to cover a myriad of issues, including fireworks and what we're experiencing in our different cities, because the response and reaction of law enforcement from one city to the next can vary based on the type of problem they're experiencing. We've had, of course, just like everyone else, a tremendous increase in firework calls this year. It's averaging about 10 to 15 a day, and it's always compressed into a small window, about 8:30 at night as soon as it starts to get dark until about 1:00, 2:00 in the morning. And one of the challenges that presents for us, as the mayor said, we have a small number of officers out on the street, day or night, and they're oftentimes caught up on other calls. And I'm sure that's the same scenario for Palo Alto and Menlo Park. So I was watching the calls for service last night from 8:30 to 11:30. And while we were getting firework calls, we were also getting calls about burglar alarms going off, some disturbances at houses, things like that. And I think that's what frustrates the community, is they don't always realize that it's like going to the emergency room for a visit. You're sitting there for hours, you think it's your turn next, and somebody walks in with a bloody towel wrapped around their hand, and that's the bigger emergency, and suddenly you fall back into pecking order. So that's one of the challenges, is trying to have timely responses, but we all have, you know, the amount of resources that we do have. What I do have going on is my entire patrol division's working on the problem. Some of the officers have been grouped up to work on these investigations, and as I said, I'll give you that information next week. One of the new patterns that we've seen in East Palo Alto is it's like a competition. We've watched some of these individuals as we're trying to identify them, and they'll come out of their house, typically put a concussion device out in the street, light it, walk back toward their house, kaboom, the big boom goes off. They go back in their house, and then five minutes later, somebody comes out of the house three doors down and does the same thing. And the poor neighbors that are not engaged in this bad behavior are getting one concussion device after another, and they think that it's coming from one place when it's actually multiple individuals that are engaged in this behavior. It's not unique to any of our cities. It's from one coast to the other, it's bi-coastal. And so what we have seen is that all the fireworks shows are canceled, people have been cooped up in their houses, and it looks like what's happening is people are traveling back and forth between the states to the east of us in Nevada and things like that, where you can go in and buy fireworks. And then there's also some speculation that out on the gray market, that fireworks that aren't going to be sold this year through these legitimate vendors are making their way out to elicit sales. You know, when you look at the firework industry, they have two paydays, the Fourth of July and New Year's. And the Fourth of July is not going to happen this year, so that's a big chunk out of their business. You know, I can't conclusively say what's going on or how those fireworks are getting out, but that's why we're seeing these very loud concussion devices that we don't normally see. What we're going to be dealing with is the airborne devices is another thing that frustrates the community because they can hear it going off, but when we see it, our city's flat, and it goes flying over up to, you know, two streets over. So we're trying to track it back, and by then, the individuals have gone in their house. So to make an arrest for any of us, we have to catch them red-handed. They've got to be out there lighting it in the street, or they've got to be out there holding it. And that can be very difficult because they see the patrol cars coming down the street. So we're prepared for that. We've been working on different strategies. And so next week, as I say, I'll put out more information about that, and you can see what we did with these investigations and what the outcomes were. With respect to the Fourth of July, we're going to triple up staffing. Last year, we doubled staffing, and it proved to be unsuccessful for one key reason. Right about 8:30, when the sun went down, we got two calls within six minutes. And one was a domestic violence assault where the wife had stabbed the husband, and the other one was a domestic violence assault in the other part of the city. And those consume much of our resources, so I'm adding another layer. I'm holding over our day shift that gets off in the early evening and going to keep them till probably 11:30 or 12:00 to have as many officers out there as possible. So that's a snapshot of what we're doing. What the community's been doing that's been very helpful is calling in using the tip line. I started them using the tip line about three years ago for fireworks because they would get frustrated about when I call in the dispatch center, they ask me like 15 different questions, and I don't like having to call in there and spend 10 minutes on the phone. Well, the dispatchers in any police agency have to ask all those questions and get all that information. So one of the alternatives, it doesn't get me the opportunity to have a dialogue and get specific information, but they send them in on our tip line, and then that's been very helpful because that shows us hot spots. It's actively monitored by the watch commander, and that's helped us be in the right place at the right time. The one thing the community can continue to do is call those tips in, and if they can, get some footage either from their home security cameras or cell phones and whatnot. That gives us even more information about where we look for our hot spots. It gives us more information about the time spans when these are occurring, things like that. And so, you know, we've done kind of the traditional preventive things, put banners out, flyers out, use my newsletter, all of those things that we put out, you know, you shouldn't be doing this, but let's face it, the people that are doing this already know they shouldn't be doing this. And so, you know, we put that out there to remind people. We're also using our ShotSpotter system, which it is designed to filter out anything but gunshots. But the nice thing is it archives the non-gun shots, which can sometimes be the fireworks, and we're going back and looking in the archive and seeing where our hot spots are based on things that were identified as fireworks and basically, let's call it, put it into the, your junk email file. And so we can go in there and look and see the patterns there and get some information there. So that is what we're going to be doing between now and the Fourth of July. But the bigger item, and I think that's why we're all here tonight, is how do we change this? And that's not something we think about what we're going to do next Fourth of July. That's something we need to think about on Monday, July 6th, and that's changing the culture. I mean, it's, the behavior is at different levels in all of our cities, but it's there. And I can tell you, when the officers deal with these folks, especially on the Fourth of July, they've usually been drinking, they feel very entitled to, that they can do this, and they get very confrontational with the officers. And so what we're going to do on the Fourth of July is have that staffing out there, deal with those folks. It's illegal to possess, period. So what we do is if we catch them red-handed, then we can cite them. If we drive up and there's 10 of them standing in the street and fireworks are going off, and there's a bunch that haven't been lit yet, those get collected by the officers and we turn them over to the Fire Department. And so we do kind of a dual role that night. We make it a citation when we can. Most of the time, we can't because they see us coming, but it's too late, they've already lit the devices off. And so we go in and confiscate it and try and break up that firework display on that particular street in front of those folks' houses that are being impacted by this. And so I think that is pretty much a snapshot. So what we, as I said, we need to look at changing the culture, and that's not going to happen overnight. And that's why I think right away, this three cities combined, working together, we have to try and find a way to change the culture. And I will turn the mic back over to Mayor Wallace Jones.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Chief Pardini. Before we go to questions for Chief Pardini, I'd like to allow us to do a round robin with all the chiefs to see if there are new ideas that are being brought forward by our neighboring cities. Then we can pause and see if we've got any specific questions for the chiefs before we move on to the next portion. So Chief Bertini?
Good evening, Mayor, thank you very much.
Of course.
Chief Pardini really kind of summed it up of what the difficulties are. Fireworks have always been very difficult to enforce. Although it is a misdemeanor crime to possess or use illegal fireworks in the state of California, we actually have to see them do it. So when we get calls that people are hearing fireworks, it's very difficult to pinpoint where that's at, and unless we're able to see them actually possessing or lighting the fireworks, it's difficult for us. One of the things that I brought up in the past for my council is that in the city I used to work for, in the city of Pacifica, we actually went through an entire process to have an add-to-layer of prevention, and that is an administrative fine, a $1,000 fine, a civil fine for anybody who is possessing illegal fireworks. I gave a kind of a second layer of enforcement. Sorry. So getting some feedback there. Aside, aside from the misdemeanor crime of it, but on top of that, a $1,000 fine, that was a city fine. That, that's something that I know our city attorney is looking at. But again, it comes back down to the fact that we have to catch them in the act, catch them in possession, and that's very, very difficult to do. As Chief Pardini said, on the Fourth of July, it is, it is very difficult because of the numbers, the volume of calls we're going to be getting for illegal fireworks. And then the fact that we're understaffed at this point, we're going to be trying to staff up at that time and having as many officers out as possible, but it's going to be kind of, you know, try to catch our tail, trying to go from one call to another and, and deal with these things. But as soon as someone sees a patrol car- But as soon as someone sees a patrol car driving in the street, they scatter, and it's very difficult to make those arrests. And again, as Chief Pardini also said, when we're doing this, these education campaigns, honestly, the people who are listening to those aren't the people who are using these illegal fireworks, they really aren't. So we can, we can do a lot of education, but I'm not sure a hundred, what, a hundred percent whether that's a really good use of our resources because I don't think those are the folks that we're trying to reach out to. So that's about it, thank you.
Thank you for that, Chief Pardini, sorry, tongue tied. Chief Duker, do you have new ideas that you want to offer as an extension of what we've already heard?
Mayor Wallace Jones, perhaps let both Chief Duker, who's our Office of Emergency Services Chief, as well as Chief Bob Johnson, who's our police chief, also speak.
Oh great, where is Bob Johnson? I missed him!
I'm here.
There he is, he appears.
Bob, how about you go first, I'll back clean up, go ahead, Chief Johnson.
Sure, good evening, everyone. The, just to kind of, good evening. Just to pick up where Chief Pardini and Chief Pardini spoke about. I mean, as far as Palo Alto, we've had quite a few responses to the noise complaints. We have yet to find anybody actually in Palo Alto lighting fireworks off. We have not confiscated any fireworks, but over the past twenty-eight days, we have responded to twenty-eight calls regarding fireworks and ten calls regarding firearms. And we know that firearms are part of this equation because we've had three incidents where we've recovered bullets that have fallen to the ground. So there's a dual danger there, obviously, the fireworks being more prevalent. Palo Alto's been very progressive in putting out alerts on both the illegal fireworks protocols as well as the danger of firearms being used. Again, the toughest part about this equation is it's something for law enforcement. We basically have to see, or the neighbor who witnesses it and calls it in has to be willing to file private person's arrest. And that can be pretty challenging to get somebody to do that. One of the things we are working on is the ability to call people back and give them some confidentiality to see if we can get some more specific information so we can do greater follow-up investigations. But as Chief Pardini mentioned, I think there are numerous investigations going on, really trying to get at some of the core users that are doing this because the sound complaints are every night, ranging from Palo Alto from seven o'clock in the evening till four in the morning. And I know because I live in Palo Alto, so I hear them as well. But I would like to turn it over to Chief Duker to kind of really speak to what we're going to be doing over the Fourth of July weekend in preparation for what we anticipate and really what the region does every year. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Ken.
Thanks, Bob. Thanks for the opportunity to be on here July as Mr. Chicago and the OES chief. So San Mateo County, you have the sheriffs, OES in Palo Alto. We were just fairly big enough to have our own OES in the city. So one of my key objectives for Fourth of July in particular, I've been doing this for over a decade, and I want to thank the Menlo Park Fire District, the city of Menlo Park, the city of East Palo Alto, and all of our other regional partners, public safety, public books, and other departments, including open space rangers. The long and short of it is, because staffing is tight and it's always, it's always tenuous on the Fourth of July, our job is to plan for the area, whether that's a wildland fire up in the hills, a plane crash. I'm knocking wood as I say all these things, but could have an earthquake in the middle of this. A lot of people who haven't really thought through. Yep, we're in the middle of a global pandemic, but we are not exempt from other hazards. So part of, part of our objective, as we always say, is it's better to trade business cards in a calm time than during a crisis. So we write up an operations plan. I've been pestering a number of you on this call, actually, with emails to you and your staff and your chain of command to make sure that we've got an accurate list of what we're going to be doing, primarily in the foothills because of staffing, so obviously, or in the baylands. If somebody needed assistance in adjacent city or through the state OES system and our auto aid agreements, we would be prepared to not only give you resources directly in our chain of command, but others from other parts. Maybe Chief Blackshire from our fire department can add on a little bit from the fire perspective if that's acceptable for the opportunity.
Thank you for that. So, so at this point, we've heard from, I believe, all of our law enforcement leaders. We have not heard from our fire chiefs. But I want to pause and see if we can get some questions into our law enforcement leaders from the council in addition to addressing some of the questions that have come in to the Q and A panel. And so maybe let's give ourselves fifteen or so minutes to tackle that. And then we can progress on to our fire chiefs and fire board members that are here as well. So for our council members that are here, let's start with Menlo Park and see if we have any council members and/or the mayor or vice mayor who have specific questions for our law enforcement leaders. Okay, so I'm going to take that silence at, no, we got it.
I'm sorry, Mayor Wallace Jones, this is Ray Mueller.
Hey there.
Hi. So I do have a question for our law enforcement. And it comes from personal experience. So I confess, I actually love fireworks and grew up loving them. And so I, and I've, in legal areas, have used them. But the issue that I see enforcement is that you're asking someone who has spent money on a product, whether they bought it legally or illegally, not to use that. They've already made an investment in it. And my, and that's, and so if they don't use it, they are stuck with it in their closet. And they also have lost that investment in it. And they may not have even known at the time they bought it it was illegal because they bought it somewhere else and brought it home. So my question is to the law enforcement is have they ever seen a buyback to coincide with enforcement? To buy back these fireworks from the community so that it's not seen as a waste of resource that sits in a closet potentially is dangerous in their home, or that they just don't know what to do with, or that they feel like they lost money on it?
Good idea, Ray.
Thank you.
I think that would be for any one of our chiefs to respond to. And if the answer is no, I think you can just say no, but I do think the idea has some merit.
So from our perspective, the answer is no, it's, I've never heard that done, but it would become a funding issue, quite honestly.
And I'd have to concur with that, you know, it's not a bad idea, but like with everything else, we have to find a funding source. And, you know, that could be an option. That could be that Monday, June, excuse me, Monday, July sixth conversation, trying to find some money in the budget to have a little bit for a buyback. So if you goofed and went and bought them and brought them back and thought it was okay, there's a buyback program. You know, I think that if we had somebody call us up and say, you know, I was over visiting a relative in Nevada, I brought this stuff back and I didn't realize it's illegal. What should I do with it? We can make arrangements for them to get rid of it. I don't, I don't see us running over and arresting them in their living room when they called us and told us, I got something that's illegal, how do I get rid of it?
Okay, no, no idea is a bad idea, so let's hold that for a second. I see a hand from Councilwoman Carlton, so how about your question next?
Thank you. I swear it wasn't planned, but my question dovetails in with what Councilmember Mueller has said. And I have maybe an idea, and excuse me for not knowing, but the people that come and they sell these fireworks, I assume it's illegal to sell them. Pardini was talking about a thousand dollar fine, rather than fining or maybe defining the people that buy them, making restrictive fines for the people that sell them illegally and using that money for the buyback would be direct allocation of funds. Now granted, it wouldn't pay for itself, but it would be a good start. And I'm wondering, what is the story with the people that sell them? Are they selling them across some border where it is legal and people are bringing them back? Are they so mobile that we can't catch them? Because it seems like if they're doing it illegally multiple times, you start off at one thousand and then you go incrementally up from there. And I'm just wondering if someone could answer, who is selling this? And would we be able to impose strict enough fines? Because I wouldn't be against at all putting severe fines that could be used for a buyback or what have you, whether punitive or helpful.
Okay, I'll start.
As long as somebody's on the corner selling it, somebody's going to buy it.
Yeah, the folks are out there selling it. Most of those transactions happen behind closed doors. They're not out on the street corner, they know who to call, they go to their house, pick it up, load it into their car, and off they go. The challenge we have is there's no crime until, you know, in the typical scenario, if they went to Nevada to the fireworks store and bought the stuff, it's legal to buy and possess in Nevada. The crime doesn't start until they cross the border into California. And, you know, it's going to be almost impossible for highway patrol or anybody to know a car has a trunk full of fireworks. So they end up in all of our cities, and, you know, these folks put word out. Some are bigger salespersons than others, you know, depending on, they've got to go buy it. So they have to have a nest egg to be able to go make the purchase, and then they come back and sell it. But what we are seeing is this is all commercial stuff that we, the neighbors are being impacted by. There are some illicit stuff out there with the M-80s and the M-1000s. We do come across those occasionally, but most of this stuff, it looks, it's packaged just like the stuff you would see in San Bruno and Pacifica when you buy the safe and sane Red Devil stuff, except it's far more powerful than that.
Thank you for, thank you for that question, thank you for that response, Chief Pardini. I would like to transition over to Palo Alto council. I see Councilman Tanaka's hand up. So I'd like to recognize you, and then I also see Councilman Bill Sett's hand up as well. So let's do in that order. And then if there are other hands coming up in Palo Alto, just feel free to put your hand up in the panelist's box or just raise it physically so I can see it.
I actually liked the suggestion from Councilmember Mueller and Carlton. I think both of them make sense. And I was wondering, has Police Chief Conner played, trying to do some sort of sting operation? Because I would imagine that it's probably not a bunch of little sellers, probably just a few big sellers. And is there a way to try to like do some networking to figure out like, okay, no, ask people, where do you buy the stuff? And try to like pretend to be a buyer and set the sting so you could actually get. Because I think, trying to get it at the time, these, you know, launching off is really hard. But it seems to make much more sense to try to get at the supply because I think there's far fewer suppliers than there are people letting off the fireworks. And so I don't know if the chief could talk a little bit about that, just doing some footwork about, like trying to figure out who's selling it and try to work up in the chain to figure out like how the distribution happens. I don't think there's a thousand people selling it, it's probably a handful, but I don't know. So maybe the chief could talk about this.
Yeah, I can chime in a little bit, I'm sure Chief Johnson and Chief Pardini can do that also. It is a bit tricky to figure out where they're selling out of. And then in order to make a buy, you've got to get someone that they feel comfortable with buying from. So it's almost like a narcotic deal where you have to send in an undercover person or use a third party that can go in and buy. We had that success about three years ago where we identified somebody that was selling. We found somebody that could make the purchase, they went in and made the purchase. We were then able to get a search warrant, we went in and served the search warrant at the house and got over six hundred pounds of fireworks out of the house. And if that thing had caught on fire, it probably would have blown the house off the foundation and burned down the neighbors' houses on either side. So it was a really, really dangerous situation. There's just one room filled with six hundred pounds of different incendiary devices. So is it possible? Yes, it's just really tricky to do. And sometimes it's based on a little bit of luck that you've got somebody that is, can make a purchase and is willing to do that for you. Because they're generally not going to sell to a complete stranger that walks up and knocks on their door.
And second question is, when you guys pick up these devices, do you guys try to get fingerprints off of them to see if you could try to track down who, like, who's causing this, causing these issues? Is that even possible, or is it totally, people wear gloves, I don't, I don't know.
It's, it wouldn't be a fruitful endeavor simply because unless you catch them with it in their hand or red-handed, what the excuse is, is, oh yeah, I saw that on the street. I went and picked it up, looked at it, and then put it back down, and I didn't want anything to do with it. And that's what we encounter in a lot of different crimes like auto burglaries and things like that, unless we catch the person and then we print the inside of the car and we can go, well, your prints are inside the car, and we caught them just down the street from the car. That's where that can be fruitful. But if we don't catch them in the auto burglary, right after they've done it, and bring the prints into play, they'll go, oh yeah, I saw that, the car window was broken. I looked inside to see if I could find the owner's information and try and call them. So not a bad idea, but very, very difficult to pull that one together. So that's typically something that I don't see us doing, and the other chiefs can certainly chime in.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you for that. And I'm going to go to our other councilman from Palo Alto, Councilman Bill Sett.
Thanks very much, Mayor Wallace Jones. Hey, the chiefs talked about hotspots. I'm just curious, I mean, does the hotspots, are they kind of the same hotspots every year? Or does it move around and it's one block this year and some other block the next year and so forth? Or is it kind of the, you know, sort of a, you know, here's our, here's our annual block party tradition kind of thing? Do we, do we know that?
Well, sir, I'll speak on Palo Alto. I mean, we are mapping ours out. I think this year is unique because again, most of ours, almost every call that we get, we immediately check with East Palo Alto, see if it was picked up on ShotSpotter. And a vast majority of them have been picked up on ShotSpotter coming from East Palo Alto. So we are, we do have calls and we do have different areas, but most of the areas we're getting calls from in the city of Palo Alto are similar or adjacent to East Palo Alto. So it sounds, and I'm close to that border as well, and it sounds like it's happening right down the street. They're that powerful. But we are looking at our calls, mapping it out, and seeing if there's a trend. And we should have that by the end of this week, so.
Okay, very good. I now want to turn my attention to my own council in the city of East Palo Alto and see if there are any questions here before we try to tackle some of the questions that are in the Q and A panel. So are there any council members from East Palo Alto that have a question?
And Mayor?
Yes, yes, council.
So thank everybody, this is a great discussion. To the chief, we know we have ShotSpotter in the city. And often for me, living in the gardens, I, it feels like the fireworks are coming from the same location all the time. With ShotSpotter, can we identify the houses that are, or the area? And if we're identifying the area, can we go out and do a campaign to those houses and remind them that fireworks are illegal? Next, I'll let you answer that first.
Oh, okay, all right. Yes, the ShotSpotter will give us approximate locations. So it's not going to give us the exact address, but it's going to be very close to that. You know, it's probably one of those four to six houses is possibly the source. So we will get that data from ShotSpotter, and that does help us. And like I talked about earlier, its design is to filter out everything but gunfire. So we go into that filtered-out file, and we start looking for common threads where we see similar addresses coming up and things like that. So that's how we find out.
I'm sorry, chief, but when we find out that there, that the area, what are we doing to that area to say, tell residents, remind them that this is illegal if we have to come back out? Something on the ground to those houses in that area?
Yeah, one of the things that can come into play there is through City Hall, at least in East Palo Alto, is utilizing the CERT workers. at least in East Palo Alto, is utilizing the cert workers now. You know, they can knock on the door and like we talked about earlier, the people that are doing it are gonna go, oh yeah, no, I don't know anything about that. But for us, you know, we've got heard the complaints from the community. They want people held accountable. So for our purposes, it's trying to identify the house that's responsible for it and then try and figure out a way to take some action against that house. So there's, can be an intervention. And then there needs to be an investigation. Two kind of separate things. So that's where local certs and community groups like that could take the flyers that we produce, go door to door with those and try and discourage it. You may have some success. There's not really a downside to it. And then for our purposes, if we can figure out the house, then we have to figure out a way to, you know, hold the person accountable.
Then also with Ring and other technology that most houses have on, are we able to tap in to any of that technology that can show what's happening on a certain street or area?
Yes, that takes the cooperation of the homeowner or the renter that has the device. Because if they're willing to, you know, have us come out, we can download what they've got on there. We know from some of the calls, and I don't recall off the top of my head if all of, any of them were captured on camera, but there was actually people a few times driving around the city discharging fireworks out of their moving vehicle. And so that's where the cameras can, can come into play. Because then we can get an idea what the car looks like, depending on how good the camera is and how well the lighting is. That can give us an idea of a car that we might be looking for.
Thank you. And then lastly, Madam Mayor, the question that I have is for the manufacturer. How do we hold manufacturers accountable for their product coming into our communities and causing all this noise pollution? You know, if you're, if you're manufacturing a device that is that deadly, you should be able to monitor and know where that is going. So as a police chief, if you gather these, these, when you make a bust and you gather the fireworks, are you able to tell where they're being manufactured?
Okay, I'll start chiming in. Didn't wanna hog all the airtime from my other chiefs. Usually, usually most of the stuff is packaged up, like I said, the turbo version of what you'd get in a Red Devil pack. So there's a company name on it. But I would say we'd have to talk to our city attorney. But the likely answer is gonna be they manufactured it in Nevada, for sale in Nevada. And the fact that somebody took it somewhere else where it's illegal and used it, they're gonna go, you know, that's, that's not our fault. So it's very difficult to hold them accountable. Where we could see somebody get held accountable for manufacturing is gonna be more in the illicit market. And, you know, that market's gonna be coming into the state. But I can tell you, I think it was two years ago, we had a fairly quiet lead-in to the Fourth of July. And it was actually Cal Fire that did an investigation and found this group of individuals that was driving semi-trucks in from the states to the east of us. And up in, I wanna say it was like Stanislaus or Topeka County, they had a big open area in the forest. And they would bring in these big rigs full of fireworks and then start disseminate them out throughout the state. Those people, I mean, that rises to a felony crime and a lot of different charges can get involved there. But once again, if we tried and, you know, trail it back to a legitimate manufacturer, they're gonna be like, hey, I sell it in these states that it's, that it's legal to. I can't follow my firework across the country. So it might not produce much.
And honestly, Madam Mayor, from my experience, a lot of the illegal fireworks are from outside of our country.
Outside of the country?
Outside of the country, yes. A lot of them are manufactured in China and other areas in Asia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Of course. Are there any other East Palo Alto council members who have a question for our enforcement officers?
Yes, Councilmember Moody. Ruben, do you wanna go? You don't?
No, go ahead. I just had, I'm not on video, but I did indicate a question. But go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead, because I actually have, go ahead, Ruben, because I actually have like three questions, so I don't wanna.
So polite. All right, so Councilman Abrika, please, go ahead.
Yes, well, I wanna thank the very comprehensive reports that we're getting. And I have a question and then a comment. The, the question is both to the, you might say, the law enforcement, you know, administration, but also to the regular administration, whether the different organizations in the community, all types of organizations have been, you know, contacted to solicit their help. And the reason I, I bring that up is that I know in our community, we've gone through some very difficult times in the past. And unless the community gets engaged, we cannot, I think, realistically just expect the police to do everything. I think that they're trying all their different tools and there's probably other ones perhaps they could do. These are times also where, you know, the whole issue of police and community is, is presenting some, you know, challenges. And so we don't want to, I think, have this be purely a law enforcement thing. So my, my suggestion is this, that if we haven't done that, that we should. Because we have many organizations. We have many activists. We have many organizers. They all have their networks of people that they work with, where they live, neighborhood groups. And I think we need to step up. And I'll give you one example. The other day, one of my neighbors literally ran into two people who were, had just finished doing that, and they took off running. Another time, I did the same thing. Now, I'm not advocating that we go and chase people and do that. But the reality is that if people know who is doing it, I feel not everyone. But there are some people who have the will, the authority, the compunction. That's why I mentioned activists. I mentioned organizers to go and talk to those people directly and say, please, stop doing this. It is not good. It is not safe. And you're making it very difficult for everyone. So what I'm advocating and what I'm trying to do myself in my own neighborhood is not to wait for the police, not to wait for, you know, other entities, but to try to reach out to, to our own community and say, please, help us. The chief mentioned the anonymous line, you can do that. Or if not, you know what? If it is your son doing it, I think it's mostly men doing this. If it's your son doing, your brother, your uncle, talk to them. Or let me talk to them if, if people feel inclined to do that. So I'm just throwing that out because otherwise, we're gonna, I think, be disappointed and end up only pointing the finger at the police. And I don't think that's fair. So I'm making a call to all of us, all the activists and organizers to get going, activate the networks and go talk to people in the street, in their homes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Abrika. And when we get to the last part of this meeting, we will do some more brainstorming on what else we can do. We're moving, trying to move through this methodically first through police enforcement. We'll do fire and then we'll do brainstorming for other, other things as well. So that was rightly timed and we'll add it to that end of the discussion as well. Councilman Moody, thank you.
Yeah, so could you put this, this question in the parking lot as well? What can the public do to assist? You know, and I think Councilmember Abrika is right. I mean, the relationships between law enforcement and community are so sensitive right now. And we don't want to ignite the powder keg, right? In such a way that we really lose sight of the public safety issue associated with this. So, you know, because I talked to some people, law enforcement, and I talked to some community leaders. And there's a sense that, you know, the, the local community has their hand tied unless they want to start videotaping those activities, trying to capture as much information as they can. And I don't know if that's a, we wanna subject or expose local residents to that type of activity. So maybe they can come back with a question, with a response to that. So a couple of questions. I just wanna, and I can just take a yes or a no. I just wanna make sure that all three jurisdictions are working together on investigations. All three chiefs talked about a lack of, some challenges with, in their labor pool, their ability to put officers on the streets. So I think the community would like to know at least the three agencies and maybe even the county are all talking and sharing information. Because I, I agree with my fellow council member in Palo Alto and Councilmember Gochet that there are similar hotspots. You know, there's certainly areas of the community that continue to light firecrackers almost every night at the same time, same station. So. And so I'm gonna stop there. Hopefully I can get a response on that question, yes or no?
Yes, we're talking, as well as I can say, our, our command staff are talking to one another. So Chief Bertini and Chief Johnson and I were just talking today about a variety of different issues. And with the, a lot of the back and forth in Menlo Park in East Palo Alto, I have very regular conversations with Chief Bertini. And Chief Johnson and I talk, we, our command staffs talk. And like I talked about earlier, we've got the Chiefs Association. We're meeting Wednesday. This will be one of the topics we talk about. We are all experiencing similar problems. But we can look at different strategies. And I think to the other item you brought up is with all the community-based organizations that we have, if we organize them, and there's one thing that can probably come effective from that. If we give them kind of a script to work off of, give them the flyers and ask them to go out and talk to the neighbors just on the block they live on. It's a lot harder to disrespect your neighbor that you know versus going out there and some strangers knocking on your door and telling you, here's a flyer, you really shouldn't light off fireworks, and you don't even know who this guy is. It's a little different when the person knocks on the door. It's like, oh, hi, Ralph, what's going on? And, you know.
Yeah. Chief, in terms of, I wanna build on something Councilwoman Gochet said. We have, we have two retail stores that are actually selling fireworks in a city where fireworks are illegal. How does that happen? And I certainly, I don't wanna let Menlo Park off the hook. I think there's a two or three retail stores that are selling fireworks as well. So how does that happen?
Those aren't fireworks, even though the little display case says they're fireworks. They don't meet the criteria of a firework. Those are those little things that you'll see people have at New Year's Eve parties. Looks like a little upside-down champagne bottle with a string. And you pull it and it's got just a little like cap in it and it makes the confetti go out of it. And so I was kinda disappointed when I saw that pop up at our two stores when that got brought to my attention. So I sent our code enforcement team from the building department out there to check on those to make sure that they weren't in any violation. And, and they weren't. These are the things that are so low-level, it's like a cap gun. And so that little cap gun spark is just enough to knock the confetti out of the little plastic bottle, but it doesn't meet the criteria of a firework.
Okay, all right. Okay, Menlo Park, are you guys experiencing the same thing?
Yeah, to Chief Bardini's point, just those type. If we believe that someone in a commercial store is, is selling either legal or illegal fireworks, then of course we would take action. Those, as you described, are not quote-unquote defined as fireworks.
Okay. This is gonna be my last comment. So one of the things that I'm experiencing in East Palo Alto is that the people who are, who are lighting the fireworks in some cases, especially in the latter part of the evening, they're individuals and they might be in small groups of two or three and they're moving around. But there's also the sense of families out there on the streets lighting up fireworks, right? And for the benefit of entertainment or giving their, their children an opportunity to kind of participate in that. You know, Councilmember Mueller talked about it earlier about how, you know, he has a dad that has used fireworks and I certainly have over the years. Has, have we ever had a conversation about each city identifying the location within their jurisdiction where the public can go and safely light fireworks as a family, as an activity, just to create some relief on the streets? Because there's no central, what we live by not having the Fourth of July is a central place to gather to experience the fireworks, right? So with people knowing that that's off the table, there's, there's a need to kind of share that family experience and coupled with the fact that there's so much inventory out there on the streets. Could that be a, an offering that we can make looking into July 4th for local residents to have a place where they can go and safely light fireworks? Okay, there's a lot of silence out there.
So my, my question for you, Councilman Moody, is are you asking, is that legal? Or are you asking from a policy perspective, are we willing to create space for that to occur to help alleviate some of the pressure here?
Right, and, right. And the third part of that is, have we ever considered, right, doing something like that? I mean, you know, there's some obvious aspects of the fireworks, right, that are family-oriented. It's just not, you know, bad people doing bad things, right? There's families involved. And so I, I think it might warrant a discussion. Maybe it's something we place in the parking lot for tonight, but we can go back to our councils and have a conversation about how we can best utilize our, our space in our cities and to get some of the illegal activity off of the streets.
There, I've noted it for sure.
Got it.
I, oh, sorry, Vice Mayor, I see your box lighting up. Do you have a question?
Yes, if I may. Chief Bardini, this is a slightly technical question, but this is where I think the only city that has ShotSpotter, I may be wrong. ShotSpotter is calibrated to pick up primarily gunshots, which to me is, I mean, I think they're all problematic, both the fireworks and the gunshots. But probably the most dangerous are the gunshots. If we calibrate ShotSpotter so that it more easily picks up and gives us the information on the fireworks, do we wind up, because we do have some gunplay that occurs in the air, we know that, do we wind up then missing and not triaging those gun incidents, which I think probably deserve greater attention than the fireworks piece? Because I believe it was Chief Johnson may have said that they've run into a few occasions where they've actually found casings where, where they've gone to check whatever explosive or, or sounds they heard. So that, that's my first question to you, Chief Bardini.
Yes, Vice Mayor, I think that the way the system's currently working, we need to keep it that way so we don't overwhelm what happens. Because when a ShotSpotter sensor picks up gunfire, it sends it directly to the cars and to the dispatcher. And so it's broadcast out through dispatch. It's also pops up in the cars and gives them a street view of, from like a Google map type thing, of the area. I think if we try and change the filters, and I don't even know if it's possible to do it that way, based on our contract, we're gonna inundate it. And it, all of a sudden, we'll get three or four activations at the same time. One's gunfire, three are fireworks. And it can see how it will congest the system and we'll miss the most important thing of trying to filter through there. Now the officer's driving down the street, trying to filter through are any of these real gunshots versus fireworks as they're popping up on the screen one after the other.
So a a quick follow-up, um i- i- is it possible ex post facto to disagr- disaggregate this data so that we can potentially um for a future year, and I think I mentioned this last year, I may not have mentioned this in a council meeting, but I I may have offline to you, um where we could take that data where we saw particular activities that was not gunshot-related but was recorded on ShotSpotter and then try to send um, you know, actively beforehand, letters to that neighborhood, at this point it's the entire city, but certainly letters to that neighborhood where there was a hotspot beforehand saying, look, we understand there was a hotspot neighbors, here is a number that you can dial into if you're doing this, or if you did this last year, we will be patrolling more often. Uh that's one way of being a little more active, uh but again, I don't know if ShotSpotter can give us that, so that's that's merely a suggestion that you don't have to reply to now. And then my last comment, and maybe it's a question, has to do more with, are these infractions that people are getting if you stop them or do they turn into misdemeanors? Because again, the criminalization of people um who are doing this is not necessarily something that I want to promote, I want to stop this. And if, you know, fines are infractions, that's fine, but we have to make sure that we don't wind up creating even future uh social issues when people uh have misdemeanors that then somehow someone doesn't show there's a, there's a particularly, you know, punitive uh judicial system that then, you know, turns that misdemeanor into something greater and we have folks going to uh, you know, county jail or, you know, potentially prison uh because of these actions. So could you kind of tell me when you stop someone and you actually find them, what what exactly are they charged with and um, yeah, so?
Yeah, they're they're charged with a misdemeanor violation for illegal possession of fireworks and then it goes to the district attorney's office and they make an evaluation of it. There can be a lot of times where the cases um get deferred to other types of dispositions, which is at the hands of the district attorney and ultimately needs to be approved by the judges, so um there there are, there are opportunities um after the citation is issued for a lot of different ways to adjudicate the thing.
Okay, thanks. I, maybe for a discussion for our city attorney later to see if there's any way that that um, you know, community service is what is promoted as opposed to um, you know, whatever, a hundred hours of community service or something, as as opposed to, you know, high ex- high fines that some folks may not be able to pay attention to some other issues. I I definitely believe that we have some way to crack down.
Yeah, and I think uh the opportunities there, that would simply be the city conveying to the district attorney, hey, we'd really uh on these cases, you know, if it's not an egregious case, we'd like to see you go for a community service rather than the monetary fine or some blend of that and, you know, um conveying that message to the DA's office um would probably take care of a good portion of what you've talked about.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Of course. So I just want to quickly tackle because I, you know, in a meeting like tonight that I think we want to time box and not have it be so many hours, I don't believe that we have um a plan to do public comment on the fireworks, but because there are several questions in the Q and A box, I do want to bring some of those forward to our police chiefs uh to respond to. There's a good six questions in here that are asking about cameras and I think the spirit of that question is um various police chiefs have said you have to catch people in the act, if you can't catch them in the act, uh that you can't actually uh charge with any sort of crime and or um uh stop what has already occurred when they're already gone. So the question I think at least six people are asking is, have we thought about cameras? Do cameras uh suffice and is there a way for us to leverage these to help us or not?
I actually, sure. I I answered one of the, one of the questions is that, uh you know, we in Menlo Park, we have, we have four public safety cameras intersections. The the question becomes how many cameras and how much uh privacy issues come up with those cameras and and one of the, I know one of the pushbacks we've had in the past with the public safety camera system is is the privacy issue, whether we want a a great deal of uh CCTV out there, you know, monitoring and and recording everything. Number two is is how much resources we have to actually monitor those. Uh and number three is, you're right, we cannot, because we see something on uh on camera, doesn't necessarily mean we can go make an arrest. We can uh refer that to the district attorney's office, but if we were to refer a case to the DA's office, we'd have to have the person identified if we can and that would involve racial, or I'm sorry, um facial uh recognition of the person to be able to um identify them and and be able to send that case to the district attorney's office. And there's a lot of, I know in my city at least, there's a lot of privacy concerns about that. So it would, although it could be a tool uh as a, as a, as a preventative tool, it would be very difficult to take a lot of enforcement action based on something you see on a camera, especially if you cannot, uh you know, identify the people who are involved.
Any new ideas there, is that, is that, does that stand across the board?
Yeah, I'd say that stands across the board. Um, a police officer can't make an arrest uh for a misdemeanor not committed in their presence, except like in a domestic violence case. So um like Chief Bertini said, you'd have to get a good photo, let's say somebody did it with their cellphone, um we'd have to have a good photo of them, hopefully they know who that person is, we could write up a police report about it and then the district attorney would have to make the evaluation on the call of whether it's sufficient enough that they would issue an arrest warrant.
Got it. Alright, there's a couple of other questions here about a task force, in particular, I'm calling out one question that says the city of New York has put together a task force that includes uh the FBI and uh a lot of bigger players. Um is there uh an appetite and opportunity for us to pursue a task force like this for our collective cities and or at the county level?
Well, speak up the uh, and I can't, I'm not gonna speak for uh Chief Pardini or Pardini or Bertini, but he uh, there's always an opportunity for a task force. I don't think we're gonna get to the level of a regional task force beyond the three cities because all the region, the entire region is dealing with this and and so I don't think we're gonna be able to expand and get FBI resources or any of that magnitude, especially this late end of the game. Uh I do see, and I think Ken does a great job coordinating a lot of the um regional assets for the Fourth of July. I think this is, you know, we're so close to the Fourth now, I think this is something we need to have a conversation for next year in preparation of what may come. But I do, will say that in my personal opinion, I think there's a lot of reasons we're seeing such an increase this year compared to years past. And I don't know if we'll have the same magnitude of an issue next year. We may, we may not, but I do think um if it weren't for the fact that some of the bigger shows have been canceled, some of these products just wouldn't be out there at the, at the level they're at, um because they would have been committed for sale for some of the bigger shows. So um like I said, but to to that point, we're not opposed to it. Resources are always an issue, especially at this point in the game, um but it's something we can have a conversation about putting together a task force. But I do want to remind the community and the council members, this is a relatively low-level crime, uh and I really like the suggestions that were given earlier by some of the other uh members of this panel. This is a community issue and it's a neighborhood issue and it's almost utilizing your neighborhood watch block captains and having them make the campaign not on our block rather than, you know, the police responding every time a sound goes off. Because I do believe the neighbors know exactly who's doing this on a nightly basis uh and I understand why there's uh apprehension to coming forward, but I think as a neighborhood, if they were to take that campaign and say not on our street, uh that might be something that could be powerful.
Um I am going to try to move us along because it's eight forty-nine now, since we have so many of our uh fire um uh chiefs on, as well as some of our prior board members, I think it's important to also um hear from them in terms of, uh what are we doing in terms of informational campaigns to attack and address one of the biggest fears for fireworks, which is that they uh can cause fires? Um and also, uh to what extent um are we, uh have we thought about utilizing some of our CERT teams um to help support some of the neighborhood engagement that we've been talking about? So I'd love to start with Chief Harold and then work my way around to Chief Geo if that's okay. Uh Chief Harold, you're on mute. You're having a great conversation, we just can't hear it. Maybe while we figure out Chief Harold's technical issue, maybe we can bounce over to uh Chief Geo and perhaps hear from you?
Uh sure. First, I'd like to thank everyone for inviting us over on, you know, a very important topic, a lot of concerns and a lot of great ideas and, you know, we're all on the same page, but it's uh finding the solutions, the the challenge. Oh, there we go, we got a phone number from.
What does that say?
It's a phone number, it says unmute. Oh, he needs to unmute that phone number. I guess he's uh, he dialed in and needs to unmute his phone number.
Can the Zoom administrator just uh remotely unmute him?
Um so we're, while we're getting him unmute, um you know, as for the fire department, I think the most important thing um that we do is get the message out. It's very common that, you know, we we message how dangerous fireworks are, you know, and and the nation is over nine thousand injuries a year, uh just approximately twenty thousand fires causing, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars of damage. And um, you know, getting the word out and hoping people believe the message and understand that those are facts and not just uh information to deter that. And uh it's also important that, you know, if somehow parents get a hold of their kids' fireworks, that they know that they can turn them into the fire department uh without any questions asked and will dispose of them for them. Uh so they know, and as some of the police chiefs have said, I think confidentiality is a big part of of civil engagement. Uh you know, even my mother, you know, she's in another city, but she'll complain about fireworks, but she doesn't make the call because she, you know, she's just doesn't want to spend the time and ask, answering all the questions they may at, may ask. Uh so at least with the fire department, you know, we'll take your fireworks, uh we won't, you know, we won't give any fines out. I think the public needs to understand that there is safety and um and in doing that and there's a, no, no extra effort in that. Also, on the defensive part, you know, we respond when the fire starts burning, but you know, what we do is uh make ourselves present, you know, in the foothills in Palo Alto, thousands of acres of of grassland that we're concerned about and on the Fourth of July, we definitely staff up. But one of, in in regards to response, I think what's really important is Chief Duker uh and his team puts together an incident action plan and he distributes that to the regional leaders around both law enforcement and fire and OES, so we know what's available in the event that there is an emergency, so we know exactly what's at our disposal should that emergency take place. Uh in regards to volunteers, I know Chief Duker uh is definitely the one to to talk about our volunteers within Palo Alto and I'm sure Chief Shapalaman will have plenty to to add on to that. Thank you.
Awesome. Are there additional comments about volunteering before we try to see if we can get Chief Harold off of mute?
Chief Duker here, I'll just say uh thank you for the kind words, Chief Blackshark. Uh so we have a integrated program where we have neighborhood watch, amateur radio, CERT, uh under one organization administered by my chain of command, it's called the Emergency Source Support Program. Um so we use the NEMA national best practices uh and kind of cut through some of the rest of things frankly. So we're uh, we're getting close to a thousand active volunteers in our program in the city of Palo Alto and we, in the case of Fourth of July, we do two things. As uh I believe it was Councilmember Moody on your side there correctly suggested, I know uh Councilmember Rika does as well, they're in their own neighborhood, so they're, they're more able to just go have a friendly chat with neighbors peer-to-peer, which is a a non-enforcement, non-scary, more friendly approach to solving these kind of community issues, so I always, I always favor that. And then on the flip side, uh so so Chief Blackshark, our wildland urban interface, the wooi, so uh you might say, well, we only have that in East Palo Alto or Menlo Park. Well, you you do buy the virtue of mutual aid and you're, you're gonna be impacted by it. So we do a a large effort to put volunteers who've been appropriately trained, uh Councilmember Koo and her husband, by the way, are among those who will be volunteering their time with walkie-talkies and binoculars up in the hills looking for smoke. So we uh, we really appreciate our community members uh from, from every angle who can come and and help us in whatever way makes sense. For example, one of our senior care facilities, Channing House, is a pretty tall building, so we've got retired residents in there who are not, not physically very mobile, but their eyes, as they always tell us, their eyes still work, so they're up there with their binoculars and they can call it in to us if they uh see a glimpse of smoke. So just to add on what Chief Blackshark and others have said, uh I'll try to get to Chief Shapalaman here, so I'll uh go on mute and see if Harold can come off mute. Thank you.
Well, and I want to acknowledge a thousand volunteers is impressive, I mean, that's a big number. Uh I'm sure you didn't build it overnight, but um we'd love to learn how to create a volunteer base like that because that feels like um, that feels like a good number to to move forward with. Um Chief Harold, okay, are you off of mute?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Alright, thanks. Well, I'm on a telephone and then I'm on the computer at the same time. So let me, let me go through uh my comments very quickly. So the fire district doesn't just protect, as you know, East Palo Alto, it services Atherton, uh Menlo Park, East Palo Alto and portions of of unincorporated San Mateo County. You know, in just the forty years I've been working here, I can tell you on scale, typically we would get some fireworks activity in the Sharon Heights area, usually uh under the cover of the um, the country club's uh fireworks display, which is not gonna happen this year. So that's probably the least amount of fireworks that we get. Uh then, as you go down uh into the Bell Haven and North Fair Oaks area, you get a little bit uh more, not, not a lot sometimes, but it depends on what the year is. Um and then finally, as you get over to East Palo Alto, uh I would probably use the term, it's off the hook. Uh it's the worst of any one of the communities that we serve, it's historically been that way and it's where we have the most uh number of problems. So just, you know, trying to raise some honesty in terms of scale to the discussion. Uh this year alone, in the month of June, we've had six fires in East Palo Alto already related to fireworks. Uh that's the ones that we could confirm. We had a fire on Week Street, a fire on Cooley, a fire on Cypress, a fire on Bay, a fire on West Bay Shore, and then last night we had one at Bell Street Park. Um and some of these involve uh structures as well, larger vegetation like uh palm trees and other trees, which when it's windy causes a little bit of concern. Uh juveniles were involved with at least one of those, uh with, uh working with East Palo Alto on all of them, the police department. Uh we were able to confiscate fireworks, that the juveniles were uh able to give up and then do some counseling to them specifically through programs that our Fire Prevention Bureau engages in and is able to talk to kids about, you know, the dangers of fireworks. Now sadly, those things happen uh typically after there's an event. In terms of outreach, um so far, uh we'll have a flyer going out in the next two days to every resident in the uh fire district, so that's about thirty-two thousand residents across the uh district, uh about the dangers of fireworks, including a Spanish version and so forth. We have our display signs up in two different locations, we work with Woodland Apartments, specifically in East Palo Alto, they've sent stuff out to their tenants, the Light Tree Apartments, same thing, Equimetalcal Hunger Program, uh puts flyers out in their food boxes, they'll do that again this week. Uh they've given out a thousand flyers and we're looking at another thousand to two thousand this week going out in the food service. Cardina's Market over by Home Depot is putting flyers in every bag of groceries that they uh they give out. And then uh as I mentioned, uh, you know, we're also doing door hangers, um and those are right now are being done in North Fair Oaks in cooperation with the Sheriff's Department. Uh we have the Sheriff's Department, East Palo Alto Police Department, Menlo Park Police Department, Atherton Police Department and the CHP, we have a good relationship with all of them. We mentioned Palo Alto, we're always in cooperation with Ken Duker and the city of Palo Alto as well. well. And then just to go to some of the questions here in a moment, but to give you a sense for the night of Fourth of July, we'll upstaff with more units, so have more ability that night to deal with potential for problems in case they occur in terms of actual fire response. Some of the suggestions that were given, and just to put in perspective, remember we're talking about explosives. So I'm not, you know, when you say a buyback program, remember you're basically asking people then to bring an explosive to some location. That, that gives me pause and is probably one of the reasons, if you check with your city attorneys, why maybe that hasn't been done yet, because you would actually endorse someone to bring something to you, you have no idea of the condition of it. You know, Chief Pardini mentioned the case of the 600 pounds of explosives. Well, that became a felony case, and we had a whole lot of those explosives because all the police departments turn their explosives, their fireworks over to us. We store them until the state can come pick them up. We do that in a metal container, but I know that when we stored that 600 pounds, it was a container that we usually empty within a month or two, and it sat for well over almost two years, which then the, the gunpowder starts to sweat and it becomes its, its own problem in terms of stability and so forth. So just giving you a sense of, you know, storage and movement, you know, again, that's why it gives me pause. We're not talking about things like sparklers and regular quote-unquote safe and sane fireworks. A lot of what we're seeing now is the ground mortars, and as was mentioned, most of that stuff is being made in China, and then it's coming into this country in one way or another. That's also the reason the law enforcement officers try and get it out of their vehicles as quickly as possible if they confiscate the fireworks. Fireworks are illegal, so to Councilmember Moody's question, a carve-out would mean that you would, I believe, have to violate state law or change the county ordinance because you can do some things in areas like Newark, which is part of our problem too, or down in areas like Gilroy, where they use that for revenue for different programs like baseball, Pee-wee league, and so forth, but they're not supposed to transport that out of the city nor use it. So all of San Mateo County fireworks are illegal, so I don't, I think, I guess you could talk to the county about that to do a carve-out, but I'm not sure, you know, again, you're dealing with people who, for the most part, would probably be lawful, when in fact, a lot of what you got going on is lawless folks that are just willing to take this risk and put other people at, at risk themselves. So, um, as I mentioned, I think our relationship is very good with law enforcement, we definitely work together on this. We have the prevention mitigation side, meaning all the flyers, public education. Again, most of that, I think the people that are, are going to abide by the law are going to abide by the rules, they follow that, which is a good thing, and then those that do not. We're on the consequence management side, which again means that when there's an actual event, that's, that's what we ramp up to deal with. On the technology side, here's an idea you could take, I'm sure we could do this very easily. In the foothills, there's what we call PAN cams going in to see if there's a fire event in the interface area. So facing the Portola Valleys, facing the wood sides, what we could do in East Palo Alto is put on top of our 120-foot communications tower, the monopole, is put a 360 PAN cam up there that could see where all this activity is coming from. I mean, that still won't be there this year, but that gives you some sense of at least where in town it would be coming from, and also the cameras that are designed for firefighting purposes allow you then to see if it's created some other problem like a fire. The other thing that we could use, and it's kind of controversial, especially when you deal with law enforcement, I know with both the city of East Palo Alto and Menlo Park, the fire district's been using drones successfully all over the country and for all types of disasters and our purposes for six years. We have a pretty sophisticated program, and the only thing that I would say is, when you apply that to law enforcement, people see it as surveillance. When the fire service says that they're doing it, we see it as situational awareness. So in both East Palo Alto and Menlo Park, there isn't a broad acceptance, I think, by the councils at this point, nor by your law enforcement entities, that that's a option that they choose to use despite the fact that we use it. We can be requested, we've probably been requested more outside our jurisdiction than inside unless it's for our purposes. So, you know, again, situational awareness to know where these things are happening is, is a key because it is a threat, it is a risk to the community, and so it's in how you want to view it, right? If you want to say it's surveillance, it has one response. If you want to say it's situational awareness so we can address, you know, lawless reckless behavior, because that's what this is, that can result in people being hurt, that's also what the consequences are. Not so long ago, I was in the town, we had the protest that ended up going all over town, and actually watched people shooting ground mortars out of their vehicles, which I'd never seen before. And, you know, the risk to people in a vehicle contained area to do that if something goes wrong is catastrophic. So, you know, there's some behaviors out there already that are, are disturbing, and the technology in terms of the sophistication, cost, and lethality of the fireworks that are being used today compared to maybe an M80 or M100 when I was a kid, these mortars that have been, you know, are pretty much widespread now, those are, those are significant devices based upon how high they can put projectile of firework into the sky, and that's a significant explosive device. That's, uh, it's a no joke. When they go wrong, they go wrong in a big, big way, and people can be not just blinded or have parts of their bodies blown off, literally, but it can kill you. So, you know, it's a serious topic, you know, there's a reality that we see, and, you know, it's, it's hard to watch and it's been going on for a long time. So, I mean, we're here to be hopefully part of the solution, but at the very least, you know, our job is to make sure that we keep all the fires contained to a small area if in fact they occur, but ideally, we don't have them at all. So that's my update.
Chief Harold, I do have just a quick question for you, and then I want to go back to broader questions because one thing I didn't hear from you is how you are leveraging and/or activating community volunteers. Definitely don't want to do any shaming, but I am jealous that Palo Alto's got 1,000 volunteers. I want to know, um, for, for East Palo Alto and for Menlo Park, both cities that you are protecting from a fire perspective, what are the ways that we are recruiting and activating a volunteer base here using CERT and/or any other neighborhood model to help us be stronger here?
Well, I do, and you have a pretty active CERT group in East Palo Alto, certainly have one that's growing in Menlo Park. ADAPT in Atherton is probably most sophisticated with, as a 501(c)(3), which I think all of them are striving for at some point. But remember, we're in a pandemic, and so, you know, the unfortunately complicated twist right now, given the fact that we're also seeing another run on infection rates with the coronavirus, is, you know, to what level do you ask volunteers to engage other people in their community, whether it's their neighborhood or not? I think that's the pause that most jurisdictions are having in, in regards to, you know, what, what is government asking them to do that may put them at risk? I mean, certainly a lot of the volunteers can be elderly, they may be retired. I think, you know, from what we see, a lot of people get in that bracket or age group want to do something for their community in terms of civic involvement and so forth. So that also places a lot of them in the target groups. So it's a complicated question that I wish, if this wasn't going on, it would be a much easier answer is to engage, you know, those groups and have them out there, active in the community. But unfortunately, you know, I think there is a, there's a risk to doing that, so you have to be very careful on how you, how you leverage that at all, given what's going on.
So I, it's 9:09, and there's two things that I want to accomplish in the next, let's call it 40 minutes, because I want to be respectful of everyone's time. The first is, I would like our sister councils to have an opportunity to engage with our fire, our fire chiefs on any follow-up questions. I'd also like to give a time box to our community residents that have joined, because I'm seeing a lot of questions asking, "Why can't we speak?" And I want to make sure that because we've got 112 people on this call, that we give some, uh, community members some time to speak, because all ideas are good ideas, well, just ideas, and, and I think that we benefit from hearing from them as well. So I'm going to start again with Menlo Park, but I'm, I'm just going to request that for our council members to try to time-box this properly. If you can narrow yourself to the most important question that you need answered so that we can leave time for some community engagement, I think that will sort of help us be respectful of time, but also get across everything that we need to say as well. Let me start with Menlo Park. I'm looking to see if there's any hands raised already. Any comments or questions from Menlo Park council members?
Councilmember Mueller?
Yes, thank you. My question is for Chief Shapalhuman. Chief, you raised some concerns about a buyback, and I just wanted to ask, is there anything that would prevent? So you indicated, so my big concern is that the, all the, all the issues you raised about the fireworks, it doesn't mitigate the fact that the fireworks exist, and whether, and if they're too dangerous to even come and bring to you, they're probably too dangerous to actually be in that house waiting to be used or to be used by someone. So my question is, is there anything preventing in a buyback program for people to say, "Yes, we'd like to, to sell these back," and that, and actually having authorities come and pick them up with amnesty in the report? And then, and alternatively, if we don't do a buyback with amnesty, I mean, what happens? What are we telling people to do with these fireworks that they, that we're asking, the community's asking them not to use?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. I mean, you know, if you were to say to me, "What would you prefer, having people bring it to us or us to go to them?", I'm going to tell you that we would always rather go to wherever it is, because then we can take a quick look, provided it hasn't been disturbed and where it's being stored, and it's going to be a pretty easy assessment to see, what is it? Is it, you know, low-level, safe and sane, it's not a real problem, or is it in fact ground mortars that have been stored, got wet, are leaking, leaching, you know, and it's, and it's a real legitimate explosive problem? So, you know, then we can ratchet up from that point in terms of how we would abate and remove, because you raised a very good point. A lot of these things, if they're not used, you know, they're stored, and then how are they stored, and is that a threat or a risk? It is a threat, it is a risk, you know, and not to overstate it, but it's an explosive, right? So, you know, I mean, you know, people, a lot of this is getting used right away. It comes in, it gets used, it doesn't get stored for an extensive period of time, but I, I'm not opposed to the buyback concept, because I think in one way, it is a different approach, but I do think you'd have to ask, you know, your city attorneys, and then we'd have to look at how in fact would it be done? And, you know, not to rule out law enforcement, but as you know, I mean, there is a little bit different approach and feel when fire shows up, because it isn't seen to be punitive. And that's just how we operate. I mean, you know, from a code enforcement standpoint, it's about safety, whereas I think, as was mentioned by Councilmember Moody, and that, you know, again, no slight against law enforcement, because, you know, they're a great partner for us, and so, you know, there's an aspect of that that we may need too, but I think your first, your first step in something like this is an assessment to see what it is, what's the quantity, and then how do you safely remove it? And if there's some sort of a buyback program, then you give that person the check, or whatever you're going to give them for, for that to be done.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I think there's a question from Councilwoman Nash.
Thank you. I was actually going down the same path as Councilmember Mueller. I was wondering, the fire district, I believe, has more money and also is a safe place to do buyback, so I was wondering if, what your thoughts were on the buyback? So you've answered some of that, but just any thoughts about doing a buyback through the fire department?
Well, I think, like I said, I think we would be the one that would really have to do it. We'd have to look at, again, legally, what's, what's our obligation, what would the city attorney say, or the district's attorney say, and then what would the board choose to do? And it's definitely a level of risk, but like anything else, you know, I mean, it's not as if we don't go to calls where there's explosives. Now, sometimes, depending upon the severity, we're calling in the sheriff's bomb squad too, so, you know, we might end up in a situation where it's that bad. You know, those are for things like hand grenades, dynamite, and we've had all that. We've had, you know, people who store all those things and we found them over the years, there's a call, and then, you know, depending upon, again, what level we're talking about, we're either going to, we're going to mitigate it, confiscate it, or, or jack up the level of response based upon the threat or severity. But I don't see it as something that the district could not do, so, you know, it's worth having some more discussion about.
Thank you for that. For Menlo Park, uh, council members or the vice mayor or mayor, do you have any other questions before we progress on to Palo Alto? I see Councilwoman Allison Cormick's hand up already. Okay, I'm transitioning on to Palo Alto. Councilwoman Cormack.
Thank you so much, Mayor Wallace Jones. I just want to thank you for inviting us and including us. I can't tell you how much I appreciate it, and your background is fantastic. I wanted to connect some of Councilmember Abrica's questions with some of the information that, Chief, I hope I get your last name correctly, Shapalhuman? Close enough?
Close enough.
Okay, great. We're saying about how there had been a number of fires recently in East Palo Alto, and I wonder if there is an opportunity, separate from the law enforcement side, to talk about social norming in some respects, to potentially share on social media, like, here's where the fires have been, or like, it's been three days since we've had a fire in East Palo Alto, you know, those safety kinds of features. I know, I can see in the questions and I know in the emails we've been getting, there's a lot of concern about the next five days. So in terms of thinking of things we could do right away, is there a way to, to share that information? Do you have channels? Can East Palo Alto amplify some of that information? Because that sort of helps everyone understand what's happening. For example, I had no idea there'd been six, six fires, and that's scary, and, you know, you'd love to be able to share that information so people know that this is, it's not just, you know, a noise disturbance, it's a real safety hazard.
Yeah, we'll put out press releases where we can and, you know, try and share the broader lessons. We've done that, some of it was picked up by The Weekly, which you guys have, Palo Alto Weekly, which is their, you know, their sister agency, In Menlo, The Daily Post, some of it by The News Network, so we do that. We work closely with law enforcement, East Palo Alto Police Department specifically, because, you know, some of these are active cases, as Chief Pardini mentioned, that take a different form because law enforcement's engaged. The one last night in the Bell Street Park is one of those cases. So we try to be careful if there's an investigation, but for the most part, yeah, those are things we could put out and have put out on social media and so forth. So, you know, we'll make sure everybody knows where the, where the fires were. Obviously, I think that, again, like I mentioned, one that we thought was successful, I know my Prevention Bureau is very happy with, is where you had children involved, they were caught, basically, they understood that this is nothing they should be doing again. I think it scared them as to the consequence of almost burning down a building, and, you know, in other cases, we don't catch who it is, right? So, you know, there are cases where we find people, we try and do the best job that we can to make sure it didn't happen. Another case, you know, that isn't always is what happened. But, yeah, all of them, we try, again, we try and put out on social media, on the different platforms that we have next door, what's going on. I mean, the other one you probably read about too is, and we're not even touching it tonight, and I won't get into it, but the encampment fires that we're having, I don't even call them homeless encampments anymore because of the ability for some of these folks to be housed, but there's an uptick in the number of fires that we're seeing there in those encampment fires too, literally, some people trying, it looks like burn other people out. So fire's a weapon, and it's a problem, and when it gets out of control, it's a bigger problem. If you guys knew from our 10-acre fire... You guys knew from our 10-acre fire on the edge of East Palo Alto there, along the bay and area, we call the Triangle, because all the smoke then comes through the community. Anybody with respiratory problems, you know, it, it exacerbates that. So, um, yeah, we, that's, again, that's why we overstaff on certain days, and we make sure that we try and suppress fires as quickly as possible. And God forbid, because I know you have a lot more hilly areas than we do, as you get something up in that urban interface. So I was on the Page Mill Fire years ago, and, uh, there were some scary moments up in Palo Alto, where we thought it was gonna go all the way to Skyline. So probably one of the last people to remember the lidocote fire, but I was there on that. So you have a tremendous risk in Palo Alto as well.
Thank you, Chief.
You're on mute, Mayor?
I was having a delightful conversation with myself. I see, uh, Councilwoman Koo has raised her hand as well.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to ask, uh, it's, it's very encouraging to hear that we're sharing investigation, and, um, you know, in, in terms of collaborating in resolving this issue. But I was wondering, have you also discussed enforcement? Working together for enforcement on this issue?
Is that for me, Councilmember?
Any of the Chiefs, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so let me, let me speak to that. You know, we have a, a very good working relationship with Palo Alto Fire Department. And, uh, you know, I can't say enough about Ken Duker, as he's mentioned for the last 10 years, on doing the incident action plan for the Fourth of July, cross-training. We have, uh, an emergency manager, Ryan Zolikoffer, that works for us. So we all work on the plans and so forth together. You know, I think the relationship is, is as strong as it can be between fire and law and so forth. So, you know, I, I don't, that's, that, that isn't a concern to me, um, because I think that works very well. Um, obviously, to get to the root, I think, as Councilmember Moody mentioned, and others have said, you know, how do you change the culture to some degree? Meaning, because I saw one of the questions, what does that mean, the cultural? The acceptability of it's okay to go out and do what's being done. Um, you know, again, I'm on the end, that's consequence, right? So we see the fires, we understand what happens when people's homes are either, you know, in some way impacted, not even by the noise, by potentially burning them down. And, uh, that's, you know, and, and again, like I said, these mortars are more powerful than anything we've seen before. You know, they've been around for about a decade. And, uh, you know, the consequence on that, if it goes wrong, is catastrophic for people to be, again, either, uh, very seriously injured, or in some cases, killed. So, you know, I hope that answers your question.
Thank you for that. How about on the, yes?
I just wanted to add, in regards to enforcement in the foothills, um, you know, right now, the campaign for CAL FIRE is to really put emphasis on defensible space. So it's really important that the houses that are in the wild and urban interface know that the terms of defensible space to best protect their homes in the case of a fire. And every house in Palo Alto that's in the foothills does get an inspection from our inspectors to make sure that they're aware of the defensible space measures that they should follow in order to protect their home. And, um, and that's, that's the campaign for this year. So that's what we do in the interest of code enforcement.
Thank you for that, Chief Blackshark. And then I was wondering on the law enforcement side, because a lot of the calls does come in, um, you know, when, when, when there's a boom sound, and neighbors are concerned, or, um, so are the law enforcement also working together in enforcement?
I'll just, I mean, I think we spoke about that pretty extensively earlier. We all are working very closely together. We communicate, not only at the chief's level, all the way down into the communication center. Uh, and that's really where it starts. As soon as that call comes in, our dispatchers are communicating with our allied agencies to see if they have more information regarding the incident, and if they're investigating it. So it starts on all different levels. So I think you can rest assured that the collaboration is occurring with the three agencies in this meeting.
Okay, thank you, that's a relief. Um, one more question is, is there any, um, does the legislators get involved, where we can perhaps push for some legislation in terms of, um, you know, taking some, um, control and action in terms of safety and, um, hazard?
So I could speak to that, Councilwoman. The legislation has already acted. It is, it isn't a crime to possess or use illegal fireworks. That's, that's already in place. And many cities have outlawed even safe and sane. There's only two cities in the County Seminole that allow safe and same. Besides that, the, uh, the legislation in California has already acted to make it a misdemeanor crime to possess or use those fireworks.
Okay, and so would there be, um, some manner of legislation, perhaps, where there might be tracking from when it goes, uh, goes out of the manufacturer's door? Um, so it's a little bit more intensive where you can, uh-huh.
That becomes, that becomes a federal issue, because now we're talking about cross-state lines. So, that's a little bit above our grade.
Okay, okay. Thank you so much. Thank you. Um, one more thing I just wanted to say. I know in, in Palo Alto, we have a very strong neighborhood association. And I think that it's, it's actually, um, we're not utilizing our neighborhoods and their email distribution list in order to get the message out. Not only with our emergency services volunteers, where they can do a lot of, um, getting the message out, but also within our neighborhood associations. We're using Nextdoor, that kind of social media. But I really think that, and I encourage all the other cities, if they are able to, um, utilize the neighborhood association email list, that's very, very powerful. Thank you, Mayor Wallace Jones.
Of course. All right, I'm gonna look to my own council quickly and see if we've got some questions here, and then we're going to move to public questions and comments. So for EPA Council, I see the yellow box lit up for Councilwoman Abrica. Do you have a question here?
No, you know, I just want to support the idea. There's definitely a lot of good ideas, but I know that in East Palo Alto, we have about 20 or 30 churches. We have probably 30 to 50 nonprofits, or organizations that are organized in some fashion or another. I think this is, this is one of those times where the organized, structured entities play a role. But the reality is that it's really the community itself that has to respond. So I, I'm just, I'm just telling you what I'm doing. I'm trying to activate all the networks that I have, small little networks, people that I know, whether they belong to an organization or not, whether they volunteer or not. And I definitely hear the chief saying, you know, it's not necessarily about going door-to-door. That's a high-risk thing. But we can call them, we can send them a text, we can email them, we can let them know that this is an emergency situation, that they have to do more than we normally do. Do not be waiting for the police, do not be waiting for the Fire Department, do not be waiting for the organized groups to call you. You call people, you find out, you do your part. So, you know, I, uh, definitely appreciate, I think, all the great, uh, suggestions and the work that everybody's doing. I'm just sharing where I'm at. In my neighborhood and the people I know, I'm trying to communicate with them. And if I know some people, and I know that they're doing it, I will communicate to them. Because ultimately, I think all the chiefs have basically said it, it's the culture, it's behavior. And we know that's very hard to change, but there are times when we can intensify the appeal to change our behavior. And this is one of those times. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And for Councilwoman Abrica, have you actually seen, um, the strategies that you're employing bearing fruit? In other words, are you seeing a decrease in your neighborhood from your actions?
You know, I just finished saying in part that these are informal networks of communicating, whether they're family, friends, et cetera. I'm not in a position to be doing an evaluation, although I used to work in an evaluation. I could do that. I'm just suggesting that we need, the more we do that, the more we do, on top of what the officials are already doing, then I think that could hopefully create some movement. That's what we're seeing across the country. You know, nobody really organized what's happening around the country. It was just people themselves realizing something important needs to change, and let's talk about it, and let's let people know. So that, that's where I'm coming from.
Got it.
But, uh, you know, yeah, thank you.
Thank you for that. EPA Council, any other, uh, questions here? Councilman Moody?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Jones. Um, so one of the, one of the issues that really draws us all together for tonight's conversation is really that, um, the public health aspect of this all. I mean, I think I speak for many, that the East Palo Alto community is really stressed out because of the fireworks. And I'm most concerned right now about our seniors and our pet owners in the community, who, we, we just don't have a sense of the impacts these fireworks are having behind these doors. Now, I'm a pet owner, and I, I know what's going on with my, my dog. And, uh, I have neighbors who have pets as well. But I think across the board, uh, pet owners are really having a tough time and need some relief, um, from the fireworks. And then the other group is our seniors. Um, one of the things that was most disturbing over the last month for me is that, um, on the corner of, um, Cooley and Weeks, which is only 50 yards away from one of our larger, uh, senior center complexes, um, they typically, every night, will set off fireworks, uh, and sometimes into the wee hours of the morning. And I've had the opportunity to talk to some of the, some of the seniors, and they're really being impacted by, um, you're on tons of needles. Uh, in fact, and, uh, Chief Harold, I don't know if you have any data that talks about, uh, going to our two senior centers in East Palo Alto, and to the one senior center in Menlo Park for health-related, stress-related, um, service calls for you, for your EMTs? Um, I don't know. Can you answer that question? Are you experiencing a spiking calls at these residential senior centers specifically?
Yeah, I'm not aware of that. I mean, we're obviously, we're tracking the COVID calls right now, but, um, I haven't, I haven't heard that. I mean, I could ask our Emergency Medical Services Manager, or Paramedic Supervisor, to see what she's seeing. We'll take a look at it. I'm, I'm not aware of that. But, you know, but I would agree with you. I mean, look, I think a lot of people, the, the noise, what it does to pets, you know, what it does to people, in the wee hours of the morning, trying to get sleep. But, you know, as I said, this goes back to the size of the device being used, the explosive content. These are dangerous things. So, you know, they're, they're getting bigger, they're getting louder, because there's more explosive being used as well. So it's not, it's, it's not a good thing for, for anybody. But we'll look at that and see if we have noticed anything. I know, you know, you probably talked about Renvee Gardens right there, as one of the close facilities.
And the surrender the arms up on University.
Correct, correct. Yeah, we'll look at it, we'll look at it.
Okay. And also, uh, Mayor Jones, I just want to close with a shout-out for our, uh, East Palo Alto Police Department. You know, I have the, uh, uh, I've taken the liberty of talking to many of the officers that are covering our, our community during the evenings. And they are, they are concerned. They're very aware, aware of what's going on. It's not that, like, they're not trying to be engaged, they're not being responsive. Um, sometimes, it's just the culture of, of the fireworks right now that can seem somewhat overwhelming. So I just want to make sure that we, we continue to lift up our, our local police department and those officers, because, uh, it seems to me they're, um, they're tackling a, a big issue, and, and, but they're showing up for work, and, uh, trying to make our community safe.
Okay, that, thank you, Councilman Moody. Uh, any other council members from East Palo Alto? I do see, um, Councilman Phil Saff, who raised his hand from Palo Alto, so we'll circle back around. Let me just finish off with East Palo Alto. We'll come to you, and then we'll go to the public.
Just, uh, Madam Mayor, if I can just say, the other thing that I think we need to look at is that the utilization of, like, the police cars, not at night, but during the day. If we know that there's a hotspot in the community, why can't we play a message in that community during the day, just reminding people that we know fireworks are in that area, and that we'll be back? We can even tell them that we're bringing cars back at night. And maybe that will, maybe deter them from doing anything in that area. I think we just have to use all the resources that we can to prevent this from happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're quiet at this point, so I want to come back around to Councilman Phil Saff in Palo Alto.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I, I just wanted to, to plus-one to a lot of this, but especially the remarks from Councilmembers Abrica and Moody, which is, uh, the importance of, uh, the culture and community. I think, you know, the, the chiefs kind of mentioned that, you know, a lot of the, a, a, a lot of this comes from kind of a toxic mixture of alcohol and Y chromosomes. And, uh, uh, but there's a lot of people, all those people, you know, most of them have, you know, relatives and close, uh, people that are close to that don't suffer from those afflictions. And, uh, and, and those people, you know, are, are the place that the, the, the culture probably is gonna be most effective, if, if we can work on it. And, and it seems like the, the main focus of the outreach is gonna have to be, "Look, this is not just a prank, okay? And, and not a nuisance in boys being boys, but, but there's some, you know, you, there's some real damage here, and your house could burn down." Um, and I thought, uh, you know, Councilmember Cormack's observation, that there, there were six fires, really, right? And I didn't know that, and I think, you know, probably everybody else doesn't know that either. So if, if the focus, if, if the outreach could be targeted on, "Look, change the, the culture, the first culture it changes, that it's not just a prank, okay? But, you know, there's some real damage could be here. If we can get enough people to internalize that, then, then that's kind of the direction we need to go." Because, because I think Councilmembers Abrica and Moody are right. You can't sort of dump this all on the police, and hope they're gonna fix it. Thanks.
I'm, I am waiting for one person to put on the table that we can put alcohol and men in SpaceX and ship them off into outer space. No one has volunteered that option.
I think you're gonna have to get in line between people that want to do that, behind people that want to do that.
Okay, all right. I'm, I'm tagging Walfred at this point, because we have been in communication about how to manage the public comment. There's still a big public, we still have 72 attendees on the call from the public. So we do want to get through as many public comments as we can. And in order to do that, we need to limit the comment or the question to a minute, so that we can cycle through many comments. Um, and Walfred, I don't know if you're going to go from the Q and A questions that are here, or if you're gonna let people just start fresh by raising their hands. What's the protocol that you'd like us to use?
So we're recording the questions. Uh, we're gonna send them to the Palo Alto City Council and the, uh, Menlo Park City Council, so they can address them internally. Uh, but for the, right now, if you want to make a comment, uh, please raise your hand, and then we will call on you. You're gonna have one minute to speak. The alarm will go off, and then we will go to, over to the next speaker. And all this is in the interest of time. So, uh, we'll start right now, and we'll start with, uh, Court Skinner.
I was the first one?
Yes, you were.
I think rises to the level of an emergency that happened here. Oh, thank you. And, and in a, in a community, one would hope that the community emergency response team would be super active. And I was very impressed to hear, uh, Chief Duker's, uh, 1,000 volunteers. I don't think we have a thousand volunteers in East Palo Alto, but I think we could have a thousand volunteers. So I'm gonna start encouraging the, the City Council and the city staff to put together a program to actually get the, the, the few people that are currently doing a yeoman's job in our search team to expand, so we, let's shoot for a thousand. Thanks.
And we have our next speaker. Let me see, uh, we'll have Penny Barrett.
Okay, um, what I've been hearing tonight are a lot of really strong, uh, what I would call reactive responses to what's going on. And I also heard that we need a culture change. That takes proactive rather than reactive responses. And we need to find alternative And we need to find alternative activities, even ones we can do in the next four days if we turn to our community. The number of people in my neighborhood can spend hours writing rants about the fireworks. They could use that time to come up with constructive things to do, to bring people together. And this is out of the water. I know who put on the fireworks display in the bay for Shoreline. He's not doing it this year, but maybe if we could get these fireworks turned in, he could do an impromptu show. He normally spends months planning this, but who knows? I just think we need to be proactive in what we do. I'll be up on the foothills because I'm an ESV.
Thank you, Penny.
Edwin Maganian Lopez next. Edwin?
Edwin Moody?
No, Edwin, it's your turn. Okay, okay, we'll move to Mitra and Jessie, they have their hand up also. Mitra and Jessie, please.
Hi, um, this is Mitra. I have a comment and also maybe a suggestion. The fireworks are just, they're just getting worse and worse. It's causing, I have a roommate who works in healthcare. She doesn't get any sleep because they go off in the middle of the night. They're kabooms, they're not just fireworks. And, um, I think I'm going to get PTSD from this myself, but I was thinking if the police are doing the, um, patrolling, have they considered using an unmarked car? Because if the people are, see a police car, of course, they're going to hide what they're doing. But if they think it's a regular car, they're, they're going to, they're going to, um, keep doing it and it's going to be easier to catch them that way, I would think.
Thank you. We'll go back to Edwin Maganian Lopez, it'd be easier there.
Yes, thank you. I was having problems with my mic. But I'd just like to reiterate what I said in the comments, the police departments have not really been departments that we can trust and they're not really equipped to handle this situation. As we saw through this entire meeting, the, the police chiefs were kind of just saying the same thing. The most important and significant comments we got were from the fire chiefs and their suggestions were the most helpful as well. We need to have, and just to piggyback on what they said, to be proactive, we should have had this meeting like two months ago. This is a seasonal thing. It isn't just a one or, one or two month thing. It needs to be addressed continuously. And, um, lastly, I'd just like to tell Menlo Park to fire Ed Soros. Thank you.
Do we have anybody else that would like to, okay, we have another, Meta O'Kello?
Hello, members of the council. I'll be real brief in a minute. We can't do the same thing every year and expect a different result. And this is what we seem to have been doing, uh, you know, ever since they started complaining, you know, about fireworks in East Palo Alto. And so, um, last year I spoke with the council and suggested that perhaps we should have some sort of task force that way, way before these things start happening, we have at least the community discussing some possible solutions and so on and so forth. And I think the leadership has got to come from the city. I, I don't think the police department is the exclusive agency within the city that needs to be dealing with this. You know, I know the exact neighbors where they, they exploded fire, I know where they are, I know the addresses and I've called them in. You know, somebody needs to be contacting them way, way before, uh, these things start happening. And so, I'm really unhappy with, uh, you know, with, with, with the city.
Next hand up, we have Vicky Rodriguez.
Hi, this is Vicky and I just wanted to, um, say that Edwin's comment is right on point. We've been at this meeting for two hours and the police chiefs and any officers haven't really provided a really good solution to this issue. I think Councilmember Abrica was probably the only person that actually came up with a really good solution, which is that we should talk to our neighbors and to learn from each other. And I think even Chief Pardini mentioned that my neighbors are probably, um, where I should turn to instead of turning to the police. So, that just like brings up the issue of like, why are we having this discussion with the police and are they actually helping at all if there hasn't been any concrete solution here? That is all.
Thank you. Robert Ellen Fisk?
Dammit, I can't say anything else out of the petition. Are you on the line, ma'am?
Thank you, Walfred. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
I just want to say, I thought Councilmember Gauthier's suggestion that we have a police car come through, uh, uh, streets that the shot spotter is located, uh, and make an announcement during the day and say they'll be back in the evening. I think that would be a preventative and a caution for the residents of the neighborhood that might be the offenders. And for me, it's the cherry bombs. As Fire Chief, District Chief Harold said, uh, these are not the M-80s that he had as a kid, but these are M-1000s and bigger. And that's what's being mistaken in Palo Alto for, for gunfire. It's really these cherry bombs and I would like to see that stop. I meant already during this meeting, uh, one has gone off. Thank you.
Dennis and Luella Parker.
Dennis, you're on mute. Dennis? Yeah, there you go.
Hi, this is Luella.
Oh, hello, Miss Luella. I didn't realize it was you. My apologies.
Yes, it's me. Uh, I want to thank you for this meeting tonight. It's very important and it, I want to say what I really feel in my heart. The, the meeting is a little slow coming. It should have been a month or two ago because I feel like I'm living in a war zone. These big bombs is coming off every night, I mean, every night. It's been going on since the first of June. And, um, my daughter is trying to go to school, she's working on her master, she can't study. She had to pay to go to a hotel because she's having her finals this week. She had to go to a hotel so she could study and her little dog is a nervous wreck and this is really awful. I mean, uh, I hope you, you all can find, come up with some solution for this because this is terrible. Thank you.
Jacqueline Campbell? Jacqueline Campbell?
Yes, I'm here. I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, this is my first Zoom experience. I just wanted to say, um, Vicky commented earlier, Vicky Rodriguez, and I'm the other person doing, I'm doing the Menlo Park petition. She's doing the, um, EPA petition. And, um, I noted in my questions that she has over 1,200 signatures and those people are very upset and they say it in their comments to us. And they want these people to have to pay the money. And most of those people are from EPA who made those comments. Now, I have, we're going on 600 signatures for Menlo Park and those people are upset too. In fact, there's been a black car driving through the neighborhoods throwing fireworks out. Now, that's upsetting enough. And then all the other problems that occur.
Can I create a point of privilege for Ms. Jacqueline because it sounds like it is her very first Zoom meeting? And I don't want to be playing favorites, but I also want to be sensitive to this being her first time. So, if you can wrap up your comments in 30 seconds, um, maybe that will help us.
I, I just want to say that you have to involve us more in what you're going to do because we know how it feels and what is going on. We know the extent of it and it really is abusive and we have all the reasons why and they're not just peripheral issues. Plus, this is not going to stop on the fourth. This is going to keep going on, you'll see. So, this isn't just a yearly thing. So, you're going to have a lot of, of work on your hands to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
At this time, I don't see any more hands up from any of, from the attendees. We have Lady Gru.
Hi, um, I'm a neighbor of East Palo Alto. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so, a lot of the time that I'm listening to our fellow neighbors, it's more of a complaint issue of noise more than safety. I think that, um, if we're going to address this, we should address the noise issue that's more of, you know, a neighborly thing. But if we talk about fires, we should talk about how we can, as neighbors, assist because I know some of us will not police or parent our neighbors, but what can we do as safety measures? Can we leave out buckets of water, um, to put out these fireworks that are, you know, are already done and over with? Should we have our hoses on standby? What are some things that we can do to proactively, since we cannot stop illegal fireworks, to actually, you know, teach someone about safety habits? Maybe having a clear, um, area to do it. Don't do it under trees, don't do it near tall bushes, just saying.
Thank you. Okay, we have Federico and Norma.
Federico and Luella?
Hi, yeah, thank you for the, letting me speak here. You hear me? Yeah, okay. So, uh, I'm thinking a proposal would be if, uh, for example, uh, police can give people three strikes, you know, like know that the first time is probably going to be, uh, too much for a person to get a fine or something, but how about if, like, if they tell people in advance, it's like, or, or three times and if they fail to follow the, the rules or something, they will get then the fine. But it's like, uh, another question I have is like, have we had at all, uh, a single person been fined for this? Is, is there any enforcement being done so far or, or is basically zero enforcement or on anything? That would be my question. And that three strikes would be nice.
Thank you. Next speaker, Norma Rodriguez. She put her hand up.
Her hand is down now, but Angus' hand is up. Now Norma's is back up again.
Okay.
Hello, this, um, message is for Eric Wilson about his comment about accusing basically residents of East Palo Alto, the male ones, for, um, being drunk and, um, alcoholics. I found that to be really insensitive and rude to all of the members here in East Palo Alto. Thank you, that is all I have to say.
Thank you, Norma.
Angus, yes?
Hello. Can you hear me now?
Hear you, yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Listen, I want to just go back to a couple of things to really emphasize the, the, what Chief Pardini mentioned at the very beginning of this meeting, that this is a, an issue with the culture. And so, if we really want to change the, the, the culture, we have to get the neighbors involved. So, we have to empower the neighbors to be part of the solution as, uh, Councilman Abrica was mentioning. That's the only way we can, we really change this culture here. Get the...
Thank you. And I believe that is our, oh, we have another, yeah, that was our last speaker for right now. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak? If you can put your hand up right now, that will move forward. Think we can move forward, Mayor?
Thank you. So, I, um, have documented what I think are, um, sort of the top surfaced solutions. It wasn't one, there were many and as I always say, all of us is smarter than one of us. So, one was, um, a buyback plan. And I think that we were asked to pursue with our city attorneys, uh, what if any, uh, roadblocks we would face by implementing something like that, but assuming that we can clear, um, a legal hurdle there. There seemed to be some belief that that is something that we could pursue. The second, um, particularly for East Palo Alto and Menlo Park was, um, to try to rival Palo Alto in terms of volunteer recruitment, um, to support, um, to support our city, uh, our city enforcement by really driving, uh, the block by block, uh, neighbor model. And, um, I'm, I'm going to, uh, sort of relate that to, uh, an additional comment that, um, Councilman Abrica offered, which was, uh, to leverage the churches and, uh, local nonprofits as part of this. So, we had been going down the path of CERT. We can certainly, um, uh, loop back into our churches and our nonprofits to make sure that we're building up a large enough arsenal there and make sure that we are, uh, creating some, uh, practices for them to, uh, exercise that keep them both safe in the pandemic, but also move us forward in terms of contacting and conveying our overall, uh, wishes, needs and concerns. There was an additional, uh, recommendation from our fire chief that we could potentially put a camera on the LRAF tower, uh, to get sort of panoramic views of the hot, hotspots in the city. There was another, uh, recommendation around, um, uh, utilizing for law enforcement purposes since we already know, um, where some of the hotspots are. There was a recommendation around using, uh, unmarked vehicles, uh, to help, um, uh, catch some of the activities that are happening in some of the places that are repeat, uh, places. We did have a request to follow up with some of the public health agencies to better understand how this is, um, stressing our seniors. And I know that came from Councilman Moody in particular. I think that that one was owned by our fire chief, um, our fire chief, but I'm restating it as just something that we need some awareness around. Um, and then, uh, let me see, is there anything else that I missed here? There's a long-term sort of commentary around, um, uh, a culture shift that we might have to tackle together and, and clearly, culture shift doesn't happen in one day or four days. It typically takes a while for that to happen, but we can certainly start now, um, with the goal of progressively, uh, getting better with this over time. I do want to quickly, let me just pause and say, were there any other big ideas that, that we thought we heard, uh, by one or many, either from the community or from council members that I did not call off in that list?
I made a reference to, uh, each city possibly identifying the location with families could go and safely discharge fireworks.
Yeah. Thank you for reminding us of that one. That was an important one. Okay, um, I do, yes, Councilwoman Dash?
Thank you. I just wanted to add veterans to the, a group that is very sensitive to the, um, fireworks and we should be particularly concerned about.
Yep. So, I'm going to add that to the comment relating to seniors. Yep. So I'm going to add that to the comment relating to seniors, to make sure that we cover off inquiries there as well. Okay, there were some comments about this should have happened one or two months ago. I will not offer any excuse for that other than to say, I do plead a little bit of forgiveness and goodwill from our neighbors and our residents. We have been operating in a state of emergency on many fronts. Not only is it, are we in the middle of a pandemic, not only are we dealing with killings that are happening nationwide, and we're observing that and sort of managing through all of the feelings and emotions and reforms that we want to drive outside of that. In the midst of all of that, which I don't believe any elected official would ever anticipate leading inside of, the fireworks are here. And so I do, I do plead a little bit of forgiveness and at least belief that we're all acting in the best interest of our communities, our residents, that we think about you night and day. And that in some ways, we have had to serialize some of our activities so that we can tackle the big rocks. And now we're focusing on this now. So I do apologize for it feeling like it's coming across really, really late. At the same time, I also know that none of us have been sitting on our hands. And so I just ask for some, some goodwill and some, some support of all of your elected officials as we move through this with a lot of stress and triggering, but most importantly, hoping that we're moving through it with a lot of grace as we, as we try to get through this together. So with that, I will, I will request that we do some follow-ups, right? For the joint, you know, as I look down this list, I'm asking myself, what are the things that we actually have to do jointly? And certainly for the things that sit with oversight from our fire department, which is shared between East Palo Alto and Menlo Park, those actions, those reports and that information, I think is, is information that we have to bring back to both Menlo Park and East Palo Alto, because it's one fire board that is serving those. And CERT, for example, and CERT volunteerism, for example, might be one of those that we need to tackle together across both of our cities. Some of the other ones related to, you know, sort of monitoring the hotspots, putting unmarked cars in front of those, those are things I think that we have to pursue as individual strategies in our unique cities. Although there was a question about, you know, the extent to which we are working together and backing each other up across cities. And for sure, that is something that is in place, but we might need to double down on that for the Fourth of July and the weeks that follow, just to make sure that we've got the appropriate support across cities there. For some of the, the actions related to cameras on the top of LRAFs, et cetera, for Chief Harold, I'm not sure if this is something that needs a formal vote, or if this is something that you can just pursue. But I would love your insight on whether or not, you know, this is something that you think you need to hear, you know, an affirmative vote from the, the East Palo Alto Council before you can take action, or if that's something that you can move forward with quickly. But the goal there, I think, would be more of a surveillance sort of mechanism for us to see overall where the city is lighting up and as a supportive aid as we move through this weekend and the months ahead. I don't know if Chief Harold is still on, but I do think we have to hear from you on whether you need a vote for that.
Yeah, no, I'm here. So I mean, obviously, any, any support from any of the council members, specifically East Palo Alto City, would certainly probably help the fire board make the decision and make the expenditure. Like I said, that's not, it's not new technology, but it's emerging technology right now that you're seeing all over the place to monitor areas that have fire problems. So it's, it would be easily done. I don't know the cost, but we certainly could find that out.
Got it. All right. So it doesn't sound like we need to vote for that. All right. So really, the thing that we need to work together in concert on are the things that are fire department related across both of our cities. I do think it would be useful for us to come back together post Fourth of July to hear some of the things that our police were not able to share today about various operations that they are running undercover to try to, or under the covers, not under, under the covers, that they can't talk about now. I think we need to see how those have resolved. And I do think that we should also come back around after the Fourth of July to see how we have executed on these strategies, how they helped us on the Fourth of July, to figure out how we can continue to leverage them through the, through the weeks and months following the Fourth of July, because it will probably continue for some period of time. And most importantly, and I think this is the big kicker item for us, how do we maintain an active stance on this going forward as sister cities, looking at this as a problem that we must jointly tackle, because we're all in this together, and we all need to leverage each other's good ideas, good models, and good, good energy to help lift, lift, lift all boats under these circumstances. So I see, let me just see, I see a quick comment coming in. Ah, and, and there is a comment coming in from Councilwoman Goshay about our youth. And I will add them into the extension of Councilman Abrica's ideas around churches and nonprofits that we need to put together a plan that leverages all of those forces in our volunteer efforts. Okay, it is 10:06. I want to ask, are there any final questions before we break? Because as we come back around to post Fourth of July, we will reach out separately to try to set that date. We won't try to do that here. But if there's any questions or burning issues that we need to raise right now, I would certainly appreciate hearing those before we, before we move to close. All right. So from all council members, we're quiet. We've already closed public comment, but I do see a lot of questions coming up from the public. So my request for those hands that are coming up now from the public is, would you record those questions so that we can get them into the records and make sure that Walfred gets them to us tonight or early tomorrow, so that we can act on those or answer those additional questions as well? Is that okay? Okay. All right. With that, it is 10:07. I am going to adjourn this meeting, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. But before I do, I just want to say again how grateful I am to our sister council members for taking the time to engage on this topic. We are looking forward to having a valiant and successful journey through the Fourth of July, activating some of these practices that we've talked about tonight. And, and more importantly, we're looking forward to coming back together to figure out how we continue to get strong and strengthen this muscle so that we can be better at this as, as joint cities now and going forward. Thank you, and have a good night.